Right, 2024. It's nine oh one AM. We're gonna open up with a prayer. I'm gonna ask, Commissioner White, say a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we call your precious name this morning, thanking you, Lord, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, Lord, Father, for all the things that you do for us daily, and we just praise your holy name. Lord, Father, God, coming up to this court session, we just pray that you touch the hearts of each and every individual here, and that we would do the right things that'd be pleasing in your sight as well as beneficial to the citizens of Newton County. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We're gonna call the meeting order. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Bomby's had a shoulder surgery, so he's out. I'd like to acknowledge the guests that are here. I'm gonna open up public hearing. Mr. Norton has asked to speak. So, we're gonna give him his five minutes.
Yes, good. See, I've got some cross numbers here. Like, it's sort of staggered me. And I'm not real sure why that money is there. This is just the end of our motive. See, we're precinct one, sitting on over a million dollars. By account. And before I say anymore, I am well aware that the law says that y'all get extra percentage of the tax revenue. Understand that. But it's standing on over a million dollars. Precinct two sitting over eight hundred thousand dollars. Precinct three over four hundred thousand. Precinct four six hundred thousand. That's a whole lot of money to be sitting on. I don't understand why you're sitting on that kind of money. And I know for a fact that in my precinct, a brand-new shop was built, and you're still sitting over eight hundred thousand dollars in your account, even back. Yet, I hear, and the other constituents in different precincts here all the time when they're commissioner, "Well, I don't have any money for that. I don't have any money for this." Looks like to me you've got plenty of money. Based on these numbers, you have got plenty of money. So, I don't know what you're doing. Sitting on it, gonna let it hatch? I'm not, I'm not sure what your plans are. But to me, if that money is not budgeted for specific purpose, then why can that money not be put back in the general fund? You're not gonna use it. You don't have it budgeted. Put it back in the general fund. That's a lot of, I'm not getting a lot of money here, folks. Whole lot of money. Where I'm taking employees, but I don't have the money. I can't give you a raise. These numbers that I'm looking at tell me you have the money. Money is that, not spending it, not using it. I can do that. Thank you. Also, it brought my attention that in the past, we have bought equipment out of the general fund. Yep? I don't, I don't think that should be happening. Commissioner needs new basic equipment. He buy that out of his, out of his fund, especially if it's that money. They even close to a million dollars. So, I'm telling you now, this money is not budgeted in some sort of way. Anytime I hear that we don't have the money to do this, or somebody comes up to me and says, "My commissioner told me that he didn't have the money to do this or that," I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna look at these numbers, and I'm gonna relay that to that individual, that your commissioners, if, no, he, he, something's wrong because he's telling you he ain't got the money, but I see where he's got an over a million dollars. I can tell you he ain't got the money. I've heard it. I bet you, just the majority of the people in this county have heard it, from side to side. Their commissioner, "Oh, I don't have the money. Ain't put five bucks in my road. I don't have the money." This tells me you got the money. And again, it's not budgeted. For the way to put that money back in the general fund. The county needs it. We just raised taxes. We'd have had some of this money, we probably wouldn't have raised taxes. Like I say, I know a bunch of that money's been sitting there for a long time. Anyway, that's what I had to say.
All right. So, thank you for snorting. We're gonna, if nobody else has anything to speak, we're gonna close the public hearing. We're gonna go to the consent agenda. We got minutes from the previous meeting. We're caught up pretty. Okay. Okay. So, we've got all the departmental reports. We'll just take no action on this until you get the minutes completed. I make a motion that we take no action on the consent agenda at this time? Second. All right, motion made by me. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right. We'll deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is enter contract agreement with the Office of Attorney General for fiscal year 2025. It's the State Automated Victims Notification Systems Grant Contract Number C dash zero one seven seven six in the amount of eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. This is the automated victim notification for the contract. It's for the DA's office. I'll get Mike to hold the door.
Get some air, so.
So, and it's in the amount of eight thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Like I say, that goes toward the Automated Victims Notification System for victims of violent crime. That way, if the offender is being released from jail or prison or whatever, the victim is notified.
I don't know if you hear it, is, is the rule with the system? So, we did, and that's what we have eight thousand point eight seventy-seven. So, we contracted the attorney general for the grant, and they give us the money. We pay the center. So, it's not even money out of, it's not even tax paper money.
Yes. It's just we get the money from the state. Make the motion that we're entering the contract for item number one. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number two is along the same lines. Approved fifth contract renewal participating in the services agreement for the statewide automated victims notification system. Contract number two zero two 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 three four four nine zero zero dash four five nine dash zero one. And this is just a contract, like Mr. was saying, for the offender to do the victim's notification.
I make that motion?
Motion made by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Powell. All in favor? All against? All right. Item number three, requesting approval of resolution, requesting a public sale of property acquired by Newton County at a delinquent tax sale. And that's, uh, the scene? Did you say resale? I could have a minimum bid on it, too. And I think this is the properties that they're talking about. And we do have a paper showing the properties and the minimum bids on them.
Yes, the ultimate goal is to get it back on the tax roll, right?
Yes, that is the ultimate goal. Make the motion that we approve the resolution for public sale. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Powell. I'll go ahead and second, second by me. All in favor? All against? All right. Thank you. Item number four is request permission to sell old bandit chipper with John Deere motor for parts. And that's Commissioner Benson. Do you have an old?
An old chipper out there, been in the yard for years, pulled it out. Money bid. I'd sell it apart.
I make the motion we approve the request to sell the abandoned chipper for parts.
Second.
This is made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number five, discuss and consider a 2025 budget amendment that allows access to the remaining funds that were donated to Newton County in 2023 by a private company to be used to improve the precinct for Duville Park.
The judge, that was an oversight on my part for not putting that in the, the budget for '25. And I said spoke with county attorney and county auditor. And to make an amendment to the 2025 budget, it has to happen in that same calendar year, correct this, Morse? So, I'm just gonna ask that we take no action on this item, and we can revisit it in 2025. And Sheriff's Department there.
Just got served.
I'm serious. I got. That's the reason he'll be at home come January the second. Anyways, I make the motion to take no action on that.
All right, motion to take no action is made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number six, discuss and consider approving submitted bid to resurface County Road forty-one eighty-one. That's Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, so we, uh, we went out on, went out for bids twice. And in both cases, the bid that's before you was the only company that, that bid on the project. That was after phone calls and requests for the people that did some more projects in precinct four to bid on it. They just did, did not a desire to do the work. So, I'm asking that the court approve option one that's a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for chip seal resurfacing. That includes the prep work and the chip seal resurfacing on County Road forty-one eighty-one, approximately forty-five hundred feet.
Page three there, those notes, that PB.
Oh, on the bid package?
Yeah.
That's a gentleman's initials. Preston.
He marked out all the.
Yeah, those are his corrections that he just.
Okay, he should have corrected. And that was his labor.
It's, it's all the disclaimers you gotta sign off to get the job, unfortunately. But, you know, in business with him, I feel good. I feel good about everything but the price. But I, I will say that I reached out to a company that does this work and, you know, inquired, "Why didn't you bid?" And, you know, they give me all these, you know, "Got more work than we can do." And I just, I said, "Well, I just, you know, I just don't know if the bid I have is a good bid." And basically, he said, "Well, let me just tell you what I would charge you if, if I was bidding that road out." And it was seventy-five percent higher than the bidding funds. Almost double. So, I called our county attorney, who was in on the bid team, and said, "I, I think this is a pretty good bid, so." And the money is budgeted, was budgeted in 2023, for the twenty-four calendar year, budget year.
For an option two here, they do, you would have to do the prep work.
Right, I took, we all went out and looked at the work, and I'm not even sure I can buy the materials for the amount they would do the prep work for, but by the time I added my forced labor in it, you know, I, yeah. And if we do the prep work, they're not gonna guarantee the chip seal, you know? So, this way, there's gonna be some guaranteed quality control.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the submitted bid to resurface County Road forty-one eighty-one. What's the name of the company?
Uh, East Texas Material.
Right, East Texas Material. That, that part was cut off from them. All right, motion made by me. Second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right. Item number seven, discuss and consider going out for bids to resurface County Roads thirty-one twenty-five, thirty-one twenty-six, thirty-one twenty-seven, thirty-one twenty-eight, and thirty-one twenty-nine. The bid package will outline bidding the roads individually and as a unit to determine options based on budget funds.
So, just for the course knowledge, so this, this was also budgeted in '23 for '24. As you guys know, the materials just skyrocketed. Felt like I could get everything in front of us done in '24. Hopefully, we can, but if not, you know, it may be that a couple of these roads have to be done in '25. And the way I budgeted '25 was, I budgeted an amount in '25 in case the work don't get done in '24. It's not unbudgeted money, so I don't have to ask for an amendment. So, this is basically, they're gonna bid it as a unit and individual, and I'll just look at it and come back to you guys and say, "I can afford to do these three roads," or maybe I can afford to do them all based on what's in the budget. Just ask permission to go out. And I talked with Ms. Courtney Locke. We're gonna develop those packages with her help and get them in the paper.
I make the motion to consider going out to bid to resurface these roads that are listed.
All right, motion made by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, moving to item number eight, discuss and consider taking action on corrected second appraisal for two oh eight County Road forty-two oh five related to the GLO eighteen days, five three three days, zero zero zero, dash B two seventy-seven, twenty sixteen buyout program. And okay, we'll move that one to the end. All right. All right, item number nine, discuss and consider what access rights, if any, the public has to fuzz buyout properties owned by Newton County and take appropriate action.
Something that is part to all of the fuzz buyout properties that now own by Newton County. Uh, the question that has been raised, what access and making this type of like, have some properties? Can they come to you directly? Can they fish on the property? Can they go on the property to break the game? So, the question is going to be, uh, what access, would y'all like to grant to them or not grant to them? Because of course, if folks could not allow them, we need to consider posted signs and stuff like that. You might wanna approach it on a per property basis. You might want us to let, you know, one piece of property be useful for one thing, and one piece of property be used for another. So, wanted to bring it up to you, so you'll be thinking about it. You might wanna have, I don't know, I don't know what the best way to approach it would be. Y'all think about it, but maybe I can get together a list of the properties that we know where they all are, remember the name, and what of those they will sell. We try to launch all of them, and let them go that way, uh, and make the decision after we get these properties.
Well, my question is, what liabilities are county facing if someone, say if someone riding a four-wheeler gets hurt? Somebody, somebody gets hurt on the property, what, what is the county's liability?
So, so this is a, this is a big issue throughout the county, and I won't say bigger than precinct four, because all the property below the dam. I was just wondering if we could have a county policy, like a procedure or a policy that if a resident says, "I would like to use this property for this," they could go to our website and pull up a policy that directs them on how they would even address or approach the county to say, "I'd like to put cattle on that. Can I fence it in and what have you?" Because the FEMA, excuse me, Chief Ellis, told me during our site visits in precinct four that the property could be used, even put goats on and fenced in and do different things with. And what we run into in precinct four is huge maintenance and upkeep of these properties. So, I would love to see the residents be able to utilize them, because as it is now, the liability's there. There's no posted signs. We let them go back to Evergreen State. They're gonna be being hunted on. They're gonna be all these things. So, if we had a policy to where the average person could say, "I want to do the..." Absolutely, yeah. And then we could, you know, that would certainly include the judge and the court.
And that, and my only concern would be county's liability and, and then squatters.
I know that right now, I was actually on the brass property, around, you know, she was, you know, riding side by side, and they basically leave it to all the, they're using it. That's how they get down to the river, it's like a human behavior, so it's out there in the precinct. The continent, so they're using it all day, then happens to.
Yeah, but I know that they're on these properties that they're using for access to the.
And we, we have an inquiry from some residents in precinct four that would like to fence in the property behind their house. That was originally a cattle pasture. They use it for that. Their neighbors vacated, and they'd like to use it. You know, where I'm at with it is, I would love to be able to let them do it, because it's no maintenance on my part. Because if we don't, at some point, that property's gonna encroach upon their property. Then I'm gonna be out there cutting hazardous trees and doing that sort of thing. So, yeah, I know every piece, I would assume every piece of property would have to be looked at individually.
So, I'm gonna do some research, uh, and they've tracked, uh, the model with lots of recommendations, send it to y'all ahead of the next meeting.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a question, too. I've been approached, uh, three or four times about hunting on the brass property, you know, it's a hundred acres. You know, could the county lease the property for them? And I told them, "No, we, you know, liability issues." You know, and I'm sure they're hunting it anywhere. You know, if we lease the property, you know, for hunting rights, could we do that?
I heard that reaction is, and then if you were in that situation, you know, there could be a release of liability or something like that. My, so my, my utter reaction to all of this is when we let other people, well, when we let people use the property. I know we don't wanna get into specifics, but, you know, there's some insurance coverage for those properties. Be something that I would certainly recommend. But let me, wanna work on.
And I know that deer leases have to maintain their own insurance policy, so it'd be part of the agreement.
There's that property, the brass property, there's some below to lead a band, hunting glove is asked to debate the lease.
Did the satisfaction, he had to watch a lot of.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I worry about. You know, people were squatting on it and then.
Everybody put in, so we fought to do, but he's a.
So, we know, probably needs to be surveyed, have somebody to go out, look, check on the status.
No, the brass property, if you lease that, they're only gonna have those teams down there.
I know, unless I'm leasing.
Well, I'll, I'll work on that.
Okay.
And if you lease it out, say like for the cattle pasture, another citizen, they should reclaim rights.
Yeah, you know, if we get ready to do this, you're basically gonna have to post it in the paper and say, "Newton County is getting ready to lease these hundred acres for hunting rights. We're taking closed sealed bids at the county clerk's office." I mean, you don't have to do it like you would have.
Yeah, it's major.
It's, it's a major undertaking, but if we look at it individual, you know, if they, somebody comes to us for the unique, there's no one around me but Timber Company, and this forty acres that was fenced before, we wanna fence it, we'll keep it up. Guys never have to worry about it. I mean, I, it's very attractive from a commissioner's standpoint. But again, the liability, I mean, we gotta work through all those.
All right. Yeah, we'll take no action on this one. All right. Item number ten, discuss and consider appeal of deobligation of funds for HGMB forty-two sixty-six dash zero zero one one. Uh, that's Newton County Acquisition and Demolition of Sixty-eight Properties. Now, this is the, FEMA has closed out the, this grant. Now, this is the, FEMA has closed out the, this grant. And that's one they're saying, "We owe 800 and something thousand back." So, uh, we want to appeal it. You know, TM said we couldn't appeal, but now that FEMA's closed it out, we have a 60 day window to appeal. So, I want to put in an appeal for it. So, and I need the court's approval to do it. Make the motion if we give the county judge and attorney whatever, whatever approval we need to put them to appeal this acquisition or whatever you call it. All right, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Thank you.
Say goodbye, Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, item number 11.
Judge, on that one there, could, could I make a request that you put that on your Newton County information page? That we approve that today and that your, your office is working with our county attorney's office to start that appeal process? I think that's something we need to do.
Yes, we could put that out there. All right, item number 11. Uh, pursuant to the authority granted under Government Code, Chapter 55 dot 071, uh, convene in closed session regarding pending litigation. All right, so we're going, we're going to go into closed session, talk about current lawsuit. Hey, we can go ahead, hey Mark, we're going to go ahead and approve the bills and get everything out of the way that, uh, we're going to move this to the end. All right, item number 12 is budget amendment. Sherri?
We have some budget amendments coming to the next court because of the fact that we've had this emergency with the flooring and also with the air conditioner, they've been rejected. Well, as you can tell, some of them are in the business. So, we've already spent $94,000 in basic caution, air conditioning. Okay, so.
Okay, and then, uh, item number 13 is payment of bills.
General Fund, 157,000, which contains $50.27. Thirty Bridge Precinct Three, $2,160. Commissioner's Special Precinct One, $10,144.68. Commissioner's Special Precinct Two, $12,438.38. Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, $8,678. Commissioner's Special Precinct Four, $29,223.30. Solid Waste Disclosure, $1,091.27. Newton County Libraries, $354.51. Historical Operator, $8.97. Brands, $2,456. For a total of $225,266.
That's more than 40,000, so nine, fifty.
Commissioner's Special Precinct Three, $144.68. And the first, $9,000, $1,301. Want to spell sign it, I'll scan it. What about again, the general fund?
The general fund.
It's for the land clearing down there that he took out of the contingent. What was happening, it was put in the computer, but it was put under the wrong date. And if it's put down under the wrong date, it does a full on this bill date.
Okay.
So, we had to correct it, make it today and show that, but it's got to be different.
They're trying to stick you with that, brother Danny?
It's good.
He got me with it the month before.
No, that was not, that was totally not.
We try to get it where we can.
Make a motion that we pay the bill.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Benson.
A second.
Say goodbye, Commissioner Powell. All in favor? All against? All right, now at this moment, we'll go into executive session. All right. Now at this moment, we'll go into executive session. Do you have the, uh, can you turn the camera back on? Look, it's right up. You're almost to it. Oh. Over, 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 over to the right.
Other way.
Other right. Whoa, back, right there. Item number eight. Uh, discuss and consider taking action on corrected second appraisal for two oh eight County Road forty-two oh five related to the GLO eighteen dash five three three dash zero zero dash B two seven seven twenty sixteen file program.
The judge, after, um, after confirming that we are within our legal and contractual guidelines, I make the motion that we approve the second appraisal for two oh eight County Road forty-two oh five per GLO eighteen dash five three three dash zero zero one, I mean, zero 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 dash B B B two seven seven two thousand sixteen mile.
All right. Uh, motion is made by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Yeah.
All against? All right. Now, we've done everything, so I need a motion from left side of the table.
Left, ocean, weird jerk.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Yeah.
All against? All right.